Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 17, 2019 work session in the Mathacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording
of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, we have all board members present with the exception of Mr. Earnshaw and Ms. Cancro. And for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I turn it to Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, we have three presentations. We have the pre-K counts presentation, bond refinancing, and the Arrowhead Bond Discussion Presentation, and a master plan update. So this evening, given the great pleasure to introduce Dr. Angstad with a recommendation this evening for the board to consider, if they were so kind to do so, the recommendation to bring a pre-K counts program to Mathacton School District. Dr. Angstad, and we have a member of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit with us today, who Dr. Angstad will introduce.
Just give me a second. I'll pull the screen down, and we'll get the presentation up. And board members can remain seated. There's a white handout in front of you.
Okay. It gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce to you our representative for the pre-K counts program from the MCIU, Rebecca DeSantis. And she has been working with me and several other people at Arcola to see if we couldn't bring a pre-K counts program to Mathacton School District to help serve some of the children in our community. So, we did present this presentation to the Ed Committee. They gave us the go-ahead to move it forward to you, so we'd like to share that with you tonight. And I'm going to have Rebecca speak a little bit to pre-K counts.
Again, thanks for having me tonight. It's an honor to be here. A little bit about pre-K counts. The Montgomery County Intermediate Unit has been running pre-K counts. This is our fourth year. We started with only three classrooms in the old MCIU building in Norristown. We grew, and this year, we actually applied for more spots. We were at 160 slots last year. In the summer, we found out that we earned 250 slots. So we grew a lot over the summer, and pretty quickly, but we found out towards the end of July. We usually find out in the beginning of July, so we have a little bit more time to get our classes started. Pre-K counts is a state-funded program. Like I said, you earn slots according to your program review during the year. Because we've been doing so well, I believe that that's why we earned so many slots this year. It is based upon PDE, so Pennsylvania Department of Education. My teachers that I hire are certified teachers. They can teach in any elementary school in the state as well. It's a little different than Head Start, because Head Start is federally funded. They don't have to have required or certified teachers in their classrooms. We can go up to a maximum of 20 students in a classroom. If we do go over 10 students, we are required to have a teacher's assistant as well. So the ratio is 1 to 10 in our classrooms. We provide pre-K for our families in communities where the parents' poverty guidelines are under 300% or more. When you think of that, you think that that's a pretty low percentage, but when you are thinking of the poverty guidelines, 300% for a family of four is about $75,000 a year. Head Start, they have to fall under 100% poverty guidelines, and for a family of four, that's about $25,000 a year. So pre-K counts is hitting that group above the 100% that really can't afford it, but they're still not able to put their child in a quality pre-kindergarten classroom or a nursery school. So we're hitting those families that need that. So we come into school districts, and we offer this program at no cost to the school district at all. We do all of our recruiting for the school district. We don't require them to get us the families. We actually go out to events and get those families to come to us to apply. So again, like I said, we are operated by the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. When the program is new, we do require 180 days, just like elementary school students in elementary schools. Or when the program is established, we do require the 180 instructional days. For new programs, we require the 160 instructional days. We do have certified teachers within our classrooms, and we serve students from three to five years. In our program, they can only be in our program for two years, so they cannot do our program for three. When we're inside school districts, we look at your cutoff dates for kindergarten registration, and we use that for our registration as well, so that they're only in our program for the two years. When they fill out an application, we go through the application process for the enrollment, and they earn points according to the answers that they gave us in their application. So for example, a four-year-old earns more points than a three-year-old, because they're more at risk of not succeeding in kindergarten if they do not get into a quality preschool. Another part of the application is we ask for proof of their income, so whether it's their paycheck or their W-2s, so that we can make sure that we're getting those students that fall under the 300% poverty guidelines. We created a memo of understanding with some of the school districts that we're in, and I gave a copy of that to Dr. Angst. It is a one-year commitment that we do ask. We understand. So some of the other school districts that we have been in, for example, North Penn, they went full-day kindergarten this year, and we were the first classrooms to ask to be removed from their elementary schools and find a new home for them. They were able to give us another space in another elementary school. So we understand that that space, that classroom that you're willing to possibly give to us is yours, and we should be the first ones to be asked to leave if you needed that space again, and we understand that. So there's that one-year commitment that we just asked for. When we do go into the second year, we'll again sit down, and we'll talk about if the classroom's still available. So of course, there's many benefits of pre-kindergarten for our students. The biggest benefit that I find is that our students, especially when we're inside their own school districts, is that they hear the same language that they're going to hear when they go into their elementary schools. A lot of PBIS is in some elementary schools. We follow along with the PBIS in the districts that we're in. We try to use those same words. In some of my programs, they listen to the announcements in the morning. They stand and they do the pledge of allegiance. And in a lot of elementary schools, you'll find that there's like a school pledge that they do, and by the end of the year, my students are reciting that school pledge, which is really sweet to hear them at three and five years old, that they already know that. So that's one of the major benefits of being inside school districts, is that they're getting used to being inside your schools early on. And needless to say, the other one is that they're getting prepared for success in kindergarten. We do a lot of academic work with our students. We use the creative curriculum. We use Teaching Strategies Gold, where we report out our findings to our students at conference times. So we pretty much act like a kindergarten classroom, but we're just getting those three-to-five-year-old students ready for kindergarten.
To follow along with that, we just wanted to share a little bit about what we were thinking in terms of where to place the class. So when this opportunity was first shared with me, I knew our elementary schools were limited in space, so we thought a little outside the box and said, what if we would put one at Arcola, where we already have a play school? They're used to smaller children. So I met with Dr. Mangano. Rebecca and I met with Dr. Mangano and said, is there any way we could possibly use a classroom there? There were some stipulations that Rebecca helped to clarify. First of all, they would have a different arrival and dismissal time, so we wouldn't need to worry about additional traffic on the campus when our students are arriving or dismissing. They are required to follow all of our COLA schedules with regards to emergency drills, and if school's closing early, or there's a late start for snow delays. They will connect with Aramark for food services. They make all those arrangements through Aramark. They pay that bill themselves, so we're not really involved. They're just using the same lunch service that we have. Any other services that students may need, occupational therapy, speech, PT, any of those other services are all provided by the IU for their students. We're not using our staff for that. But then we started talking about some other benefits of placing a classroom at Arcola, and we thought about all the opportunities for our COLA students to have peer buddies with the younger children. We have many kids that participate in the play school program, and we thought this was another great opportunity to have opportunities to read to students, to build early literacy skills. And the classroom that we are proposing is located directly across from the library, and so being able to get some library time as well. And then perhaps the best news is that Rebecca's promising me that she can guarantee us 95% of the students enrolled in the class, so up to 20 students will be Mathacton residents, and that we would be serving students within our own community. And then, next steps. So we're here tonight to see if you would be in agreement with moving forward with this. If you approve, I did receive a copy of the memorandum of understanding that we would share with you for next week. We would then let them know. They would start getting their application and staff with the proposed idea of starting this classroom by October 7, so things would move very quickly. Dr. Mangano has already taken care of emptying the space, so that's not a concern. It's just whether or not you approve moving forward. And what we are looking for is a place to play, learn, and grow together, and thought that it would be a great opportunity for the kids in our community. Have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Angstad. Members of the board to my right, are there any questions for the team presenting this evening? Ms. Reese?
I was part of the education committee, so I just thought of one question tonight. But before I get to the question, I just left the education committee meeting thrilled that, because we had talked about this before, and it didn't come to fruition. So the fact that it might very well possibly come to fruition is just outstanding. So thank you to both of you for your work, and anyone else involved. But the 180 days, is that still possible, or how is that possible with an October 7 start?
So because it's a new program, I only have to do the 160.
Okay. That's what I thought I heard, but I wasn't sure.
It will, the calendar, I will try to get over 160, just because I feel it's important for these kids to get as many days as we can. So our calendar will extend a little bit more than the Arcola elementary, or Arcola Middle School calendar extends. I think they end like the second week. We'll probably end the third week of July, or June, not July.
And I hate to be picky. The other question that came up is, I know you're very cognizant, and the whole district is cognizant, of Arcola's busy times. I would imagine Skyview's busy times are thought of as well.
Yes, so both count. I looked at both of your timing. I really, we tried to kind of fly under the radar with all the school districts that we're in. We look at your early-out dismissal times, making sure that we're not interfering with them as well, just because we don't want more traffic in these elementary schools. But yes.
Yeah, I'll second what Andrea said. I think this is phenomenal. Thanks for doing this. I'm glad we can get Mathacton students here. I'm glad we can utilize the space that we have at Arcola. It's really a great opportunity. The only question I had was about the computer lab that we're moving around at Arcola. Do you know what it's being used for now versus where all that stuff is going? Otherwise, I think what you guys are doing is phenomenal. I was at the education committee meeting too, and I heard about it. It was great.
And I can answer that. Dr. Mangano said they no longer were using that, because everyone's one-to-one at this point. So they have dismantled most of their computer labs.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Ryan?
No questions from me. I just want to say thank you very much for the presentation. I think this is thoroughly thought out. One of the first questions was, you know, transportation, arrival times, and everything like that. You have that down. The arrow mark and the breakfast and lunch taken care of. I think the peer buddies is a great idea, so I just want to commend you for this, and I hope the rest of the board is in favor with this, and we can bring this program to Mathacton. So thank you very much.
I just want to confirm, from a facility standpoint, do any adaptations need to be made for these students?
I can address that if you want. So actually, what we've done, the biggest concern was the restroom facilities. And Dr. Mangano has set aside one of the restrooms in the office. That was a dedicated space. So the classroom is right around from the office, the main office center. So she's going to make a dedicated space for that. She has also shared all this information with staff, including our teacher that runs the play school, and they're all elated that this may become a reality. They thought it would be a great addition to Arcola.
To my left, any questions? Mr. Winters?
No question. Also, congratulations to the IU for the increase in ability to service it with the IU and what we have in Montgomery County is truly a leader in the state, and it's good to see you recognized, and hopefully you're coming back here for next year for a second classroom.
I saw this presentation also at the education committee, and I think it's just a great fit for our district and for the space. I was wondering, how are the children transported to and from the program?
We do not provide transportation to our students. We do ask that the parents provide transportation. And when I have, when I meet with the parents, I really enforce arrival and dismissal times because of, we could, if it wasn't timed out right, we really could cause traffic jams in these parking lots, and we don't want to do that. The state requires the students to be in our classrooms within 12 minutes of our arrival time, or else they're marked tardy. If they're marked tardy three times, I have what we call family engagement workers, where they're kind of like social workers for the program, that after three, I have set, this is a standard for my program, after three tardies, we come together for a meeting to see if we can help them arrive on time. After five tardies, there is a possibility that I could dismiss them from the program, and I make that clear to them. I never want to do that to a family, because they're in the program for a reason. But the state really looks at our attendance rates and our arrival and dismissal rates. They have to be in our program. They can only miss 10% of the days within our program, so we really enforce that as well.
Okay, so then, they're going to be transported privately by the parents, and then they're going to go to the entrance where the play school in the back by the planetarium. Is that correct? Thank you.
Ms. Albert, Ms. Nice.
Yeah, with second or third, whatever. Everybody else has been saying, I think this is a wonderful addition. I understand you're going to work with Aramark for food services, and have we already confirmed Aramark can handle the additional volume?
Well, we didn't want to move forward with that until we knew if it was approved, so we can actually reach out maybe this week before to make sure.
Okay. I mean, I know.
They have another backup plan, just in case.
Right. Another backup plan would be that we, some of my sites that are not in school districts, we have a food service that comes and brings our food. So that would be our backup plan.
I'd love to hear that there's a backup plan. That's great.
Always.
Yeah, thank you.
So if there's no objections from members of the board at this moment, I'd like to place an agenda item for your consideration next week, attach the memorandum of understanding for your review, and ask that you consider this as an option next Tuesday, the 24th of September. Thank you both for your presentation this evening, and very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have bond refinancing and Arrowhead Bond Discussion. We have Glenn Willard from PFM here this evening. You should have a blue color presentation in front of you. There is no presentation for up on the screen. Glenn?
Okay, thank you. It's nice to be here. Three things for you tonight. One is the refinancing Dr. Zerbi mentioned. Two is, we talked with the finance committee about how much money you could borrow in calendar year 2019, because you've already borrowed some and done some leases, so we'll touch on that, and then talk about Arrowhead as the last item. So in the booklet, the good news is that interest rates have moved lower, continued to move lower, really from last October or so. Rates just have been moving downwards. Roundabout Labor Day was sort of, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner on page one there, Around Labor Day was the bottom. I know the 10-year Treasury hit a 1, I think it was a 145 or so, Around Labor Day, 145. It hit 190 on Friday, so rates have moved up that much. So that's that little fish hook you see at the bottom of the chart there. That was on Friday, it was 190. It was at a 180 today. So markets sort of moving around with things going on in the world. The Fed is supposed to make an announcement tomorrow. It's, you know, I think Tim mentioned, it's like 93% chance they're going to lower rates 25 basis points tomorrow. So that's already sort of cooked into this. Okay? But with rates being so low, you know, we're watching all of our clients dead. If you turn to the next page, you have two bond issues that are actually candidates to be refunded in the yellow there. You can see that both of them are what we would consider to be very short bond issues. So when you go to do a refunding, there's a couple of things that determine the savings, how big the bond issue is, how high the old interest rates are, and how long the bond issue is. In other words, if you refinance your 30-year home mortgage, you can save more than if you're refinancing your two- or three-year car loan. So one of the issues here is the savings are small compared to some of the refundings that we've done here. And I think the max was probably around $150,000. We have the charts in here. A couple pages are going to show you around $100,000 of savings. I think if you're doing it today, it would probably be like $80,000. So if you'd like to proceed, we're going to need to pick a target. And if it gets to the target, we'll try to get the refunding done, and if it doesn't get to that target, then, you know, we'll just let it, it doesn't go away, and might come back in six months or something like that. We don't know. So that's going to be the refunding. Why don't I just skip page three for a second, since we're going, page four and five, these are these two old bond issues. Page four, you can see this one has 2% interest rates, and it only has four years to go. On page number five, this one goes out to 2025, so it has six years to go, and the interest rates are around 2.3%. So we have 2%, 2.3% bonds that go out for a couple of years. If you go to page seven, this is about where we could have refinanced the bonds a couple days back. In column four, the old interest rate, or I'm sorry, the new interest rate is around a 145 or 1 and 1/2, so we're refunding, you know, 2% bonds with 1 and 1/2% bonds. In column 11 on that page, you see we can make the savings come out in the current budget and the next budget that you'll work on, and then plus or minus $1,000, everything's the same. So what we would, if you're interested in proceeding, I think the next step would be to pick a target, I'll throw out $100,000, just because it's a nice round number, of a minimum savings level. Okay? So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Yes, since Brian and Jen aren't here, I'll just say that the discussion in finance was around what's our limit, right? Any savings is savings. Is it worth the effort, the expense? And he's talking about net savings after we pay bond council, and they get their cut. So, you know, we talked about maybe 75. 100 is kind of where we landed, but I think it's open to the board as to how low you want it to go.
So in just adding to that, I think what we need to be clear on is, while there might be $100,000, if that's our target of savings, there's also almost about the same amount in terms of the expense. So for $200,000, basically a full turnaround of about $200,000. So the question on the table for finance was, is that a good, does that make it worthwhile? And so, and not until we get into the second part of Glenn's discussion, where it may appear to be more beneficial and/or necessary to consider maybe the second option, even independent of doing this refinancing. So we'll get to that. But just want to understand that in order to get to the $100,000, there are fees of about $100,000 that would be associated with this. So finance committee was concerned about that particular exchange.
Yeah, there's financing costs, and the Department of Ed saves a little bit of money, so they save $10,000 or so. Again, I think if this was a longer series of bonds, we would hold out for more, but because it's, you know, such a short couple of bonds, I hate to tell you to hold out for, you know, a half a million dollars or something like that, because it's just not going to happen, I don't think. Okay, so that'll be one question. There's a little resolution. I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Drummond?
I just, so the fees being, I guess, almost the amount of the savings, is that because they're fixed and because it's a proportionally small amount that we're talking about?
Pretty much fixed, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, actually, a question and a comment here. I would agree, I think the $100,000 target seems appropriate here. I don't think I'd want to see that go much lower than that. But I did have a question in terms of, if these are potential refunding options, would that also mean that hypothetically, if we had the cash, we could pay these off completely now?
That's correct. You could. On page two, there's, lists all of your call dates. These are the only two that are past the call date. One was March of 18, and one was September of 18. So should you choose to, you could just look at it like you're making a CD investment at 2%.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to confirm that.
Yeah.
Glenn, if we go with the refinancing bond, and the costs are $100,000, and we do not hit our $100,000 target, say the net savings is $50,000, do we still owe any money out to any of these expenses?
Well, I think the worst case would be, you know, an advertisement. This would be incurring debt, so we have to do the debt-incurring ads. I don't know what they are, $500,000 or $1,000 or something like that. You might be out that. And the rating agencies, if you get a credit rating, and then you never issue, I think they're charged like 60% of the fee. So, you know, we might be $5,000, $7,000 kind of number, if we start and never complete it.
Just a follow-up on Mike's question. Just make sure I'm looking at this correctly. If I look at the two yellow columns you highlighted on this sheet, you've got totals of, I guess, which total should I subtract to find out what our net savings are in payments, if we were to just pay them off directly right now? In other words, a refunding would save us 100. What would paying them off now save us anything? Would we save coupon payments?
Well, I think I'd look at pages four and five, maybe. Let's just try page four. So in column two, in the pay the debt mode, you would make those principal payments in column two, and in column four, those are the interest payments you would make. So in this example, you'd have to write a check of $3,705, plus pay interest to whenever the settlement date was. Just call it $3,750. You'd pay $3,750, like you're investing in a CD at 2%. And then it would come back to you in the form that you would not make the interest payments in column four, and you would not make the principal payments in column two. So over the four years, that's how you would get your money back. You'd have to, you advance it all, and you'd get it back in those pieces over the next, you know, eight payments. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Okay, so in a few minutes, I'm going to get to a little resolution for you to look at, but why don't we go to page three now, that we've talked about that. So again, when I was coming to the finance committee, we talked to Tim and said, we'd like to show you this refunding, and Tim said, well, can you show us what happens with respect to borrowing less than 10, making sure we're less than the $10 million in the calendar year and being bank-qualified? So this gets to be a little wordy, because we're going to try to fit through certain exceptions the IRS gives us. So on page three, so on number one, you previously issued $4,475 back in the summer with some original issue premium. That's what OIP stands for. So $4,836 in 1A is what counts towards your $10 million calendar year limit for 2019. So you've already used 4.8 million. You did Uh, you did, in number two, some leases around 800,000. So we add those two together, we're at 5.6 million that you've already used in 2019 towards your BQ limits. Then in number three, we're talking about these two refundings. The IRS gives you an exception, uh, for 90-some percent of it. Uh, $3,705,000, $4,195,000, about 155,000 is going to count towards your calendar year limits. Um, and, uh, well, we talked about the savings there. So when I was with the Finance Committee the other night, we just talked about, uh, number five, uh, because I thought the question was how, how, how can we maximize the amount we get? You could do 4.2 million more along with a refunding, but it would have to be in two separate series 15 days apart. These are the IRS rules, uh, not mine. Um, so then the discussion at the Finance Committee was, well, then we have to pay two financing costs. Yes, you would, um, but they would both be bank qualified. And as I thought about it, uh, over the last couple of days, we've added number four. This doesn't get you the most new money, but it would be one series of bonds. So you could do the two refundings and number four and raise 2 million of, uh, new proceeds in calendar year 19 without a whole, uh, extra bond issue 15 days later. You could do it all in one night. So you'd have two refundings, one borrowing of $2 million. That all is going to be $10 million on its face that one night, and that would meet the IRS rule. So you'd only have one financing cost to get 2 million, or you have two financing costs to get 4 million. So it's up to you which, I'll write a wrong answer. If you knew which way rates were going to go, you know, that'd be easy to do. So, so when we get to the resolution, um, I have the refunding, and then I'm going to ask you to pick either, we'll call that option four or option five, uh, as detailed there. And then in, uh, all of these, uh, we would need to get, uh, a debt-incurring resolution approved before December 1 and then close on the transaction, transaction or transactions by, uh, December 31. Okay? And then when you get to 2020, you have a new fresh calendar year limit of up to $10 million. Again, if you want to be bank qualified, as we talked about Arrowhead and things like that, if the amounts go over 10 million, you're still allowed to do it, it's just not bank qualified, you don't get the five-year call, and the rates are probably just a sliver higher. I'll stop there again.
Yeah, I'll just add that, excuse me, one of the, one of the reasons that we're looking at this is because of where you saw interest rates are right now. So, you know, we know we have this, besides the master plan, we have Arrowhead coming up in front of us. So knowing that we will use the money in some form or another, whether it's for master plan expenses or it's for Arrowhead, that it would be advantageous for us to take advantage of historically low interest rates, um, to capture that benefit now as opposed to waiting to do perhaps a giant issue later, whether it's next year, middle of the year, end of the year, however we want to, want to structure that.
Uh, yeah, two, two questions that just sort of intertwined, I guess. What happens if the question that Mr. Ryan had related to paying maybe, um, the 2012 bonds as an example off, uh, or some portion of off early? What happens to the state aid in that particular case? I don't know, Tim knows also, but in, in the case here, there's $256,000 related to state aid on page four.
Well, if you make a cash payment and take out the bonds, uh, the state is supposed to reimburse you once you've filed the paperwork. Uh, as long as they have money, they're supposed to pay before the end of the fiscal year.
To the same, to the same amount that I'm seeing on the schedule?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then if we-
Uh, well, you would get reimbursed on all the principal and you would only get reimbursed on the interest payment up to that point, so it's-
It's going to be less than the 257, but it's close.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, and then when you give us options four and five, is there actually an, is option five without separate, separating between 15 days available if we skip number three? Which is, so for the audience, number three is the refunding, uh, number four is $2 million of one-time money, and number five is 4.2 million dollars of money split between 15 days.
I'm sorry, ask me the question again.
So my question is, could you go to number, if we skip number three?
Right.
The, the number five of 4.2 million dollars is available as a one, one transaction?
Yeah, the only thing that would happen is it would be 4,200,000 plus the 155,000 up in 3C, so 4,355,000 is what you could buy.
Okay, yes, okay, yes. But in that case, we would not need to have two transactions if we just went for new money of 4.2.
That's right, that'd be one transaction. You could just say, forget the refundings, just go get us the most new money. That would be five plus the 155,000.
Yeah. And then I guess the other comment I would have, I mean, we certainly could pick a dollar amount, but it seems to me that, um, the best tran, the best, um, direction as a board we could give you is what the yield rate is at a particular point in time to, to trigger, um, when we expect you to, to try to execute. So if, I, I guess, um, I guess it's because it's so far out, right?
Well, from the time you tell us to proceed, we would have to get the credit rating, official statement, sort of get all that kind of stuff ready. That takes a couple of weeks, and then it's on the shelf, ready to go when we see interest rates at a certain level that we know-
That you execute.
Right.
But I guess, I guess what I'm saying is a trigger point, if we saw them return back to, uh, Labor Day rates, would that be the, the correct trigger point to have you go for it? I guess is the way to put it.
Most folks pick a dollar number of savings. It's pretty close to what you're saying, the yield, the interest rate, but-
Okay.
Because what, which interest rate is it? You know, the front one, the back one? You don't care as long as you get the 100 grand. If that's the number you pick.
This question kind of goes to Ralph since he's the other one from the Finance Committee. So I know some of this information wasn't available during that meeting, but did you guys kind of land anywhere with what you're thinking in terms of, you know, additional new money and how much and, you know, what, what the best thought process was there?
Yeah, I think, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, we were leaning towards the refunding, wait the 15 days, get the new money, um, assuming we could get the 100,000 in savings.
I'm sorry, I mean, in terms of options four and five, if you're, if we're going to borrow ahead, was it-
Four was not discussed in finance, that was in tonight.
Okay. And where were you guys with, with the 200 or the 2 million? Was that still-
Yeah, I'm sorry. So number four, which is that, then the new, this is the new option that Glenn's bringing to us tonight, to do it all in one financing, because that was one of the questions that we had. Was there a way for us to avoid, you know, getting billed, getting dinged twice for, uh, both issues? So Glenn went back to his homework and came back and said, yeah, we can do it, but we could do it. We would only be able to get $2 million of new money instead of four. So, what's the, Glenn, what are, what would be the total costs, uh, between those two options? In other words, what's the difference, uh, between those two options from an expense cost?
I didn't figure it out exactly, but 5 or $10,000. So it's, it's 50,000 if you do option five, and it's 5 or 10,000 more if you do option four.
Oh, it's almost nothing. The difference in, the difference in the expenses and the fees associated with one issuing versus-
Well, it's 50 versus, so the difference is 40. I'm saying it's 50 versus 5 or 10, so the difference is 40.
Got it, okay.
So then my next follow-up question goes to Mr. Bricker. What's the recommendation from the Finance Department?
Um, given the borrowings that we're looking at, I would say we want to probably maximize how much we're going to have. We have slated $16 million worth of work next year, regardless of what the decision is with Arrowhead. If we can borrow bank-qualified money today at the rates, I would suggest that would probably be where I would be looking with regards to the refinancing. Um, I understand $100,000, but if I'm going to save, if I spend $100,000 and get back 150 and only keep 50, I'd still want the 50. So if I'm going to lower our expenses, I, I probably would be okay with that. I mean, there still should be a minimum to make the effort to go through, so whether it's 50, 75, or 100, that's the board's decision, but I, I would always, if it's all going to save us money, I'm all for it.
Okay, so it, on, uh, page nine, that's a model of what 4 million of new money looks like if you want two or, you know, two, it would probably just be prorated by that. Page 10 is the resolution. So on page 10, there's a blank at the end of the first paragraph when you're ready. Uh, and then if you want to pick paragraph two or paragraph three, um, to go along with it, that would give the team, I think, the marching orders we would need. Okay? And then, uh, page 11, this, this is, so we're moving on to Arrowhead. Uh, so on page 11, this is the model showing, Tim, uh, columns three and four are what had been projections for, uh, 2020 and 2021 new money needs if there was a 35 million of needs in those years. If you drop down, uh, to the year-ending 2023, and you just look at columns three and four, it's around a million 250 is what you need for debt service, uh, for $35 million. Okay, so hopefully that's, that's kind of a, a benchmark for you, is a million, I'll call it a million 250 for that size project. It could be moved around over, we could phase it in over a couple of different years, can use capitalized interest, there's any number of things when you're ready. Uh, I think that at this point, you need to get a little farther along with the architect and the planning and drawings and site developments and all those kind of things. I don't, don't claim to know much about the project yet, but, you know, PennDOT sometimes gets involved and things can slow you down. So the biggest issue at this point is sort of the timing issues of when you're actually going to need the money, when you're going to go out for bid. You know, if it's a new building, you may need an Act 34 hearing, there's just a bunch of things that, uh, you need to get behind you, maybe before you're ready to jump into the bond market, although we just saw on page one, interest rates are low and attractive, so we got to keep our eyes on that. There are certain legal rules. Um, I think you need to have, uh, drawing a blank, I want to say it's 10% committed, binding commitments for 10% of whatever you borrow within six months. Um, so, you know, there's a couple, a couple items you need to get, um, behind you before we're really ready to go. But along the way, we'll work with the Finance Committee, keep our eyes on rates, and, you know, talk about calendar year advantages and when you might do it, keeping in mind the sooner you borrow the money, the sooner the budget impact is. So, you know, there's a nice balance of trying to borrow money as the, uh, construction money is being spent and as you have capacity within your budget to, uh, phase in the mills that are required. So we'll have to work on all that. Yes?
Um, Glenn, just a, a quick question. Let's say, for example, our, our architects suggest that, um, maybe in August of 2020, uh, we might have bids before the board for their consideration, uh, in, in the construction of a new elementary school. Um, do you have any thoughts at this point in time, when, about, we should be considering the, uh, going out for bonds and assuming that the board approves, uh, bids in August of 2020?
Well, we'll certainly keep our eyes on interest rates, but, you know, I think spring or summer, you might take a look at it, depending on, you know, how committed you are to the projects and the, how comfortable the architect is with the pricing and things like that. You know, I mean, I think that's the earliest, probably. And our plan has been to, you know, I don't know, but you have all these, some other prior, you may have other, I don't know, but, I mean, you've talked about other projects from time to time. I mean, you know, maybe you just do 10 in, uh, calendar year 2020. I mean, I think there's, you know, there's a number of different variables. You just, you know, you just need to be, uh, ready, uh, and you can go accordingly. It's always, it's always good to be ready and, uh, not have to rush things.
In terms of page 11 here, I, I know this is kind of a pro forma, but one of the concerns is a board that we'll have to face kind of moving forward is the, um, the increase year over year of, you know, our, our new bond and interest and premium payments, you know, the ending local effort.
Mm-hmm.
It's 280, 450, then up to like 675, year to year. Is there any methods or ways that we can, um, smooth those large increases out over those first couple of years?
Well, the, one of the first things to talk about would be capitalizing interest. You're allowed to do that for two years or one year after completion of the project. You know, that's one technique. In looking at column 11, this whole page was sort of concocted to, um, keep things level. Uh, there are some, uh, upticks there as it gets the whole way up to 11,719, and then it's level after that. So, you know, there may be a way to use capitalized interest on some of these later bond issues.
Okay. And like I said, the only reason I bring that up, Mr. Enchell is not here, because I'm sure he would say it himself, but part of the thing to keep in mind with this type of borrowing is we are limited by Act One.
Yes.
So with, with the idea of doing this, a, a significant portion in some of these years will go directly to our, our bond and our interest payments, our debt service. So I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Nevers?
Yeah, just one more comment to note. We talked about it in finance, but the rates, so the, the bonds that we have now, we are, and Tim, you're going to, I'm going to need your details here, but the, we are actually gaining more on the income side of our interest in the accounts where we have the money now than what we are paying on those bonds. So in other words, we're actually benefiting from having this money in the bank. Now, that's not the plan, but it's worked out that way so far.
So currently, this year's interest rate is 1.4%. We're currently locked in at roughly, our most, our highest investment is at 2 and 1/4% and 2.27% annual yield. So we're somewhere between 70 to 80 basis points higher on our income that we're getting from the money sitting there than we are on what we have to pay for it.
And how long is that realistically going to last?
I'd have to look at the next future years, but it steps up slowly. I think the overall bond yield was 210. I'd have to pull that up to verify, so we're, that, the whole bond issue would be less than what we're currently getting. That's assuming our rates continue to hold, which tomorrow will be a change in that.
Glenn, the one thing I didn't see in this is if, in getting away from the conversation of, of Arrowhead, but back to, uh, the refunding and the, you know, potential additional money in this, uh, calendar year, is there a timeline that you recommend us considering and the steps that need to take place?
Well, I'd say as soon as possible. Uh, I mean, we're basically, we're pretty close to October 1, and, uh, we would have to have the bonds priced and sold by December 1 in order to close in, uh, this calendar year, so that only gives us 60 days.
So if I heard you correctly, you would want the board to give you direction, uh, no later than the 24th, which is our voting meeting this month?
Yeah, that's next week, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. That'd be my suggestion, yeah. So we're ready to go. With the other, I mean, if these interest rates move back in your favor, we'd like to get into the market and get the bonds sold. There's a lot of issuers who are looking at refundings all across the country, so the market will get pretty crowded, pretty fast if we can recover that 50 basis point move there at the bottom of the chart.
Okay, so I'll go back, so I'm assuming by Dave's question here, he's looking for some type of direction for next week in terms of-
That was my next, that was my next, yeah. I just want to, what I want to be able to do is put an, an action item on the agenda for the board's consideration. And, um, you know, uh, I guess the question is, are we, are we putting in just new money? Are we putting in, uh, a, a threshold to reach with the, with both new money and the refinancing? I, I don't, I don't personally think that doing the single issue is, is in our, in our best effort, which would only produce 200,000, or $2 million worth of, of, of additional borrowing this year. So that's, that's the direction I need. So, we're doing, trying to do two things with a threshold or just one?
My thought process here would be to follow the direction of the Finance Department. It sounds like the, you know, the one member of the Finance Committee member who's here, and also to be the most aggressive in terms of our, um, agenda item for next week. So we will still have a discussion, hopefully all nine board members are here, we'll be able to work through it. But I would suggest putting the most aggressive, so paragraph one with the 100,000 and the, the third paragraph with the 4.2 million dollars. And we can certainly- And we can certainly debate, and if the decision next week is to go with just the 2 million, that's fine, but I think it's, in terms of public input and things like that, I think it's best to be aggressive at this point.
Is anyone in objection to the recommendation from Mr. Ryan?
No, I was going to suggest the same thing, so.
All right, great, thank you.
I, I can probably, as long as we get an ad in the paper, tell them, I could probably have, Bond Council get it in and have it advertised, and it would be a debt-incurring resolution, and then we wouldn't need to come back and, might save a week or two, I don't know. If you're comfortable with that, if you're not, we could certainly wait and come, you know, we would need to come back again then.
That would be different than what we typically done, is that correct?
No, I don't think so. So we, so we can have the one-page resolution, which is fine, or we can have the 30-page resolution, and you would approve the refunding at 100, and either the 2 million or the 4 million. And it would be the debt-incurring resolution.
I say go for it, and let them, you know, because if the interest rates move, we're going to want to jump on it.
Right. Any objection?
Okay. Okay, okay, so we'll see you then.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a master plan update, change orders and recommendations. Please know that you will find under the fiscal items, under 10E, two agenda items for next week for your consideration. This evening, we have James from Fidavia here to just give you an update with more specifics on those two matters.
Good evening, everyone. What we'll do is we'll start with progress of the projects at present. We have got majority of the work complete, and we are actually just in punch list phase. And we've got two items here on the agenda, as Dr. Zerby mentioned, to be bringing up to your attention and for recommendation. And with our anticipation that we're going to be bringing forward change orders next month, doing a resolution on all the allowances that we have in some of the projects, so we're going to be coming to you with potential credit change orders to you to get that work completed on that side on 2019. Moving on to the 2020 work, we are following right on schedule with the timeline that we have in place. We are finalizing contracts, and we'll be getting that all resolved this month. And we are with the anticipation of going out on December and January with bid packages and getting released, and with the anticipation of January and February receiving bids. We have part of the conversation that we had in the committee, we were looking at possible changing some of those dates, and we're in conversations with the administration and getting, maybe potentially moving some of these items further up. But right now, we're moving forward and progressing well with them.
Just to be a little bit more specific, we had conversation about how all the information from the, the approved $16 million worth of potential projects for the summer of 2020 will converge into your decision-making process in terms of time. So I raise the concern that if, if certain bids come before us one month and some come the next month, and in the next month, it'll create a challenge for you in terms of deciding which of the $16 million worth of potential projects are best suited to be moved forward, not only from a matter of work, but a matter of, of cost. And by not approving something, say, in January, and then approving something in, in March, and we let the window pass us by, it just makes a complicated situation. So what we're currently working on is being able to have bids come in in December and January, with January being the month for all the decisions to be made. So we've got to work that out, but that's what we're targeting at this moment in time. That way, you'll have all the projects and all the bids in front of you. They'll be in different stages in terms of, some will have, you know, an additional 30 or 16 days left on their, on their, their notice for you to approve, but hopefully, we'll have all the information so that you can make a, a complete decision at one point on all the projects. Mr. Nevers?
Yeah, and just to add to that, part of the logic there is that we've got quite a few projects with different options, and how far do we want to go, for example, with the high school HVAC work? What is the ultimate cost going to be for the facade repairs at Eagleville? And ultimately, that's the one that's probably going to come in latest in the game, so we want to make sure that we have all the information in front of us so we decide whether we go for all 16, whether we do some subset of that work, especially depending on what the prices are that we get back.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
This is a very minor question, because I asked all the big ones last week. Because of the work at the high school, the use of the door, and this might be a Mr. Fretz question, the use of the door that way was limited. I would imagine that's over now, or is not over now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Yes, the work that has taken place, we had the masonry work and the roofing work going on here at the, at the high school. So we had some times where we had some work taking place that, you know, there were people here, but we had changed schedules even in the evenings that they were working, so I don't see any...
Are you referring to the east entrance?
Yes, over east and around the...
Where most of the, the community swim occurs?
And, and the other, and...
Yeah.
It's very...
Are we 100% back up and running?
Yes, we're back up and running. They're working on some punch list items, but they still have been working, you know, we had originally provided them with a schedule of all activities, and we had entrances flagged for them to avoid, and those were all the entrances that were being utilized. So shouldn't have had impacts. I know that, you know, we do run into some stuff sometimes where somebody's not exactly following to the letter of the law here.
And all that made sense. I just was curious, now that it's the 17th, if we're all...
Yep.
Because it looks, it looks from the, when I drove up, that all's good. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it looks, it looks real nice, and they've gotten, they've gotten through. Like I said, we just did a punch list where we have some stuff scattered around the building, two bricks here, some pointing there, stuff that we're flagging that they need to have done. And we also have some additional work that we want to talk about because we have some, we have the ability while they're here to get some additional work that we still need to have done. And there are some allowances in the contract that we'd be able to exercise, and we'll be bringing that stuff forward.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller or Mr. Fretz?
If not?
Okay, thank you. Your problem? That ends the presentations for this evening. Then on the 24th, we have the M Awards. Ms. Aubrey Larson will be providing an update to the board and the community on our meetings with Lower Providence Township regarding the Autobahn Elementary School. The third item is, as part of a discussion that occurred at the Finance Committee, a presentation by Mr. Bricker on the per capita tax, and a discussion by, led by the chairman of the Finance Committee, will unfold. Please know that starting in October, we will again bring back our students to do student presentations, to open the board meetings, and to recognize staff for their significant contributions to the Methacton organization. With that said, we'll also be appointing new student board representatives, and we'll have them take the oath of office. And we will certainly go into our standard reports. You'll notice that under the advisements, there are four advisements, so if you have any questions related to those, I'll be glad to answer. Take probably comments, the minutes, and then we'll move on to fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you. This month, we'll have the list of bills, the treasures report. There again will be no budgetary transfers until next month. We have the contracted services to approve the extension of Karen Mossup of Collegeville as an independent contractor through the end of October 2019 as a rate of $5,000 per month, again, of which First Student will be reimbursing the district for this expense. And then we have the master plans as discussed.
Any questions for Mr. Bricker from my left? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I know that you were, you said you were just trying to get past tomorrow when it came to transportation a few days ago, last week. Have you thought about the contracted services going forward in the 2021 year?
With regards to routing? Yes. I've not had a chance to sit down with Dr. Zerby and explore that. We just ended the call center last week, and I was out Thursday, Friday, and Monday.
But to, to clarify that response, we've been concerned about that, and we've been talking about it. Our, our primary objective last time we had this conversation with the board is certainly around making sure that we had the best start that we could. We believe that the action that the board so took back in August allowed us to have a reasonably good start, and with Karen's help, our Director of Business Services and all the cooperation from First Student and their staff, we think we had a pretty good start, and we thank you for that. We know we need to address this. This is something that is a concern of ours, obviously, and it's going to take some time and coordination with First Student to resolve the matter. It will be, it should be known that it's my, it's my interest to make sure that the routing remains with First Student. I think that's the best method. We just need to make sure that we have the right people in First Student that can support that.
Just as a comment, I mean, obviously, Tim and the bus drivers for First Student, it's been a very successful, and I think everybody working together is, in my four years, this has been the best setting up here for the response of the first, the first month of school. So to all those involved, it is appreciated.
Any other questions for Mr. Bricker or Mr. Ryan?
Just as a follow-up to what Mr. Winters said, is that, is that true? I mean, the feeling from the board, obviously, I mean, we haven't gotten nearly as many emails, phone calls, things of that nature that we have in the past. I mean, it's, it seems like this year went off pretty well. Do we have, you know, any data to back that up? I mean, in terms of, you know, calls into the call center? Last year, we had things of, you know, people reaching out and not hearing back. I haven't heard any of that this year. I mean, can you give us a little bit more detail on, on some of that?
So the call volume is less. I can't match that up because someone deleted the data, so I know that there was well over 500 last year. Having gone through those, we're in around 300 this year. We also started a call center a week earlier to answer routing questions, having gone out with the communication of the non-pubs, being sent by the non-pubs to their enrollment, and not doing mailers this year, and making everything electronic communication. The number of complaints, the, you know, you're always going to get some. Nothing's going to be perfect or make everyone happy. There's, that's just not possible. I would say that the number of complaints are down. I think that the drivers, the dispatchers, the routing, everyone worked really hard. There was good communications for everyone, and I think that's why it was as successful as it is this year.
I'll have to say again, congratulations to all involved, and well done.
Any other questions for Mr. Bricker in finance, all items? If not, we'll move on to personnel items. Mr. Regina?
I have another number of items for the board's consideration this evening. First is a classified resignation. The second is, we have two employment professional positions. One is the replacement for the resignation of the English teacher at the high school, and one was a replacement for the La Breco transfer to first grade at Eagleville. We are expecting to have a name next week, and we have a few names that may show up in certain items that I'll bring to your attention now. But we have interviewed an ELD position, and we're hoping to have a name for you by next week for that as well. We have one employment for a classified position. This is a replacement for the Faulkner transfer from Arrowhead Office Assistant to Woodland Secretary. We are expecting to have a couple of names for you next week, waiting on some paperwork to come back for some IA and PCA positions. And we have one IA position that still needs to be filled at this moment, and everything else should be caught up. We have one professional uncompensated leave for, that's medical. We have six supplemental contracts in the form of department coordinators, mentors, ISS lifeguard during the school day, and curriculum writing. Next week, we will have activity contracts, two coaching additions, and we are hoping to have our event supervisor for the fall and winter sports next week as well. We have one classified substitute, one volunteer list, and two items for community education.
And it also would be possible that, considering the background checks and some other checks, we might have a recommendation for a Director of Technology for your consideration. And we'll include the entire process for, for how that unfolded, but please know that the, the board vice president, president and myself met today with the, the final candidate, and that interview went well. So we hope that with all the background check and stuff that we need to do, we can give all that information to you and provide a recommendation for your consideration on Tuesday. But we'll keep you apprised of that. Any questions for Mr. Regina? Mr. Winters?
Dr. Zerby, can you, at the policy committee, Ms. Pfeiffer gave us an update related to the shortage of vaccinations for volunteers. Can you give a quick update on that?
Would you like me to do that now?
It was in volunteers, volunteers were in this section.
Absolutely, good. That's fair. I'll take it, I'll take it. I was just trying to understand where you were coming from, that's okay. So it should be known that back in, I believe in May, before the end of last school year, Ms. Pfeiffer, who's responsible for, you know, gathering and securing the, the materials associated with conducting the tuberculosis screenings for volunteers and staff, was informed that the, there was a shortage. And then in August, we were discussing potential volunteer options with the Methacton Coordinating Council, and again, the, the matter was researched, and Ms. Pfeiffer again indicated that there was a shortage. And in, and in hearing that and concerned about our ability to address our employees, we figured a solution for that. But addressing the need and the practice for administering the TB test to volunteers, we felt was challenging, given the, the short supply. So we did put it on the agenda for consideration at the policy committee meeting that was just held last evening. But it should be known that on Friday of, of last week, we got informed that the, there is a shortage, but it's a shortage of specific dosage of, I'll call them, for lack of a better term, vials of 50 dosage vials versus 10 dosage vials. And therefore, we, we further affirm that we are going to be able to secure the proper test and be able to continue issuing those TB tests to our volunteers without an expense going forward, as our policy indicates and as our practice has always been. So we're thankful for the work that Ms. Pfeiffer has done to do that research, and we appreciate the policy committee's attention to that matter. And we did inform the Methacton Coordinating Council this evening of the same information, so that they were apprised of it, because as you, as you're all aware, they were holding a volunteer ceremony in the high school cafeteria this evening. Does that summarize your understanding, Mr. Winters? All right. Are there any other questions for Mr. Regina?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, sorry. I was going to ask about the TB test, because I also heard that lifeguards might need a TB test. I'm not sure if that's true, but I heard that was an issue too.
They're either, they're either considered an employee or volunteer, and they have more than, or 10 or more hours of contact with, with students, so they would.
Because I thought that was an issue as well, that they were having trouble filling that. So is that taken care of now as well? Awesome. My question, couple of questions. Forgive me, I can't, September, I know how busy you were, and thank you for all your hard work, and the weeks are running together. Spanish, how are we there?
We're doing well. So right now, we have, after our meeting, we were able to call in a long-term substitute who's been doing very well at this moment. We've gone and observed a few times, and we're looking to hold interviews for the candidates that we have at this moment in time, so hoping to be able to secure that next week. But right now, things are going very well.
And then my other question, and I don't want to stick this person out or anything. For the uncompensated leave, this is a phenomenal educator to, she taught two of my, two of my three children, and she probably would have taught the third if there wasn't a twin in there. And I know I've seen her name for, for extended leaves before, and I think when, when I had her in the classroom. So is there, do we do what we can to help these people, and are there certain, certain guidelines? Because I would imagine, you know, we, if I've only been here four years, that, that's a concern.
Certainly. So...
So, so how I can answer that for you is there's, there's a number of levels that we go through when an individual has medical leave. Of course, first, we have sick days, right, which we, the person has access to benefits and of course, receives pay during those. Then we go into FMLA, which is 12 weeks' worth of covered leave, but they're not paid during that time. And then after FMLA is exhausted, we go into uncompensated leave and we have the right by policy to request an individual to be off for a semester or a year when we receive that information. And we do that so there's the least amount of disruption in the classroom. So, that, that is what you're seeing here this evening.
Any other questions for Mr. Regina? Mr. Ryan?
I may be missing something here, but I think we have a attachment or two missing here, like for number six, where it says retroactively approve the supplemental contracts in the amount of 1,740, but there's only two attachments at the bottom, one for the ISSS and one for the mentors. Should there be another attachment listing the names and who's getting that?
For the 99. Two of the department heads?
No, for number six, the supplemental contracts for curriculum writing?
Yes, I'll, I'll track those down and make sure that you have a copy of those. Thank you, Mike.
And along the same lines, do we, I mean, it seems like it's almost every month, for the last couple of months, we keep getting these supplemental contracts for curriculum writing. Do we have a ballpark, you know, how much are we spending in terms of supplemental contracts for the curriculum writing and, you know, when does, when do we stop seeing these kind of show up on the agenda? I don't remember seeing this that frequently in the past.
I, I don't know that in the past, these were regularly on, but we have spent with these approximately $26,000. We budgeted significantly more than that. So, at this point, I had asked that all curriculum writing that was submitted in May be completed by the end of September. And so, that, that should be happening once we finish getting the time sheets and all. You should stop seeing these so much. There may be some things that arise, such as with some of the assessments where we need to do some alignment with standards or something like that, but for the most part, you shouldn't see a whole lot after this.
Thank you very much.
Except into the second half of the year as we prepare to go into the summer. So, the idea then will be that, yeah, so that's, that's likely what you're seeing.
Yes, yes. Once I get, and I had, I had spoken at the Ed Committee meeting to the board members that, once we get into spring, I will then have for them an outline of how many hours of curriculum writing we're looking at for the different areas for the summer. And so, then that would come forward for approval.
And what we can do, Mr. Winters, is get the budget amount that we had budgeted for the curriculum writing and give you a count to date based on the assumption that these will be approved and what that expense has been so far. That way, we can keep, and as we put them on the agenda, just keep that running record for the board.
Thank you. Just as a quick follow-up then, so the, the second half of the year, as you were just mentioning for the, the summer work, so that money would be budgeted for next year, that wouldn't fall in the current bucket? Okay, thank you.
As a follow-up to that, sorry, Mary, I think I'm still in the Eagles fog from Monday night, so I apologize if I'm asking a question I should know the answer to, but the, the number six on the supplemental contracts that we were just asking about, these are Act Do they get MIAC time for doing these curriculum periods?
No, they may sign up for curriculum writing either for pay or for MIAC hours. So, these would be people that had other MIAC hours and so they're getting the pay for it instead.
Okay, it's either or is the, is the answer, the choice?
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on matters of personnel for Mr. Regina? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is curriculum and programs. Dr. Gattone?
So, we have nothing listed here tonight, but I'm thinking we will have the pre-K counts next week under there.
The next on the agenda is policy. The policy committee met last evening. As you can see, there are nine policies for your consideration. And are there any questions at this moment in time for those? Ms. Reese?
Yes, and I haven't been a member of policy for a year, so I'm a little rusty and I wasn't able to read every word, but I had a couple of questions. The 200s, were, were we just up for renewal for those or was there, was there a reason we did 201 or 204? I'm just curious.
There were some law changes that impacted those policies.
Okay, and then I was looking at 201 admission of students and I know some teachers had brought up concerns about some first grade students who go to private institutions and then start at Methacton. And reading this policy, I didn't know if, it looks like, it looks like some of that has helped. What, what I mean is children coming in very young because they went to a private institution and at our public school, some educators feeling they weren't quite ready. So, I'm trying to read this quickly and wasn't able to totally read it, but it looks like there's some parameters to help that.
Absolutely. The, the matters that you're referring to, I believe, were brought to our attention about two years ago and the, and maybe just a little bit longer. And the policy committee did take this into consideration and the policy was adjusted. So, I think, and I don't have it in front of me, but, but likely, oh, likely the date is relatively recent, within two years. And, and we made the adjustment specifically to, to address the concern of early, early starters and their, and the, some of the challenges that, that were, that were there. So, that, that is, that is in the existing policy as it stands now.
And then I also had a question about the attendance policy. I know that attendance is, is some of, you know, man, like you said, mandated by laws and things like that. I just, as an educator, I know how important attendance is and I also know that some things happen, but are we pretty, I don't want to say strict, but as soon as they hit that magic number of 10 or some, trying to read through if the numbers have changed, do we get on that pretty quickly as far as making sure? Like, I, I'll just be honest, as a teacher, I'm always on it, even with my 130 kids. As soon as I see a kid, a child get to number nine or number 10, I'm emailing the principal and emailing everybody and guidance counselors and saying, what's going on? And sometimes I feel like I get feedback and sometimes I don't and I also don't feel like that's exactly my job as an educator. So, since this attendance policy is here, it's a good time for me to ask, are our administrators and guidance counselors on top of this?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question and I, and our resident attendance expert is here this evening who reviewed the policy that was before. So, Dr. Anstetter, I don't know if you can just take a moment to share some of your feedback related to Ms. Reese's question?
So, if a student is absent and it's a legal absence, once they hit 10, we have all types of letters that go out. We keep them informed along the way. If they're illegal absences, it goes into the truancy phases, which is also listed in that policy. That's the new language that was added. After three days, they're notified. After the fourth day, they go into what's called a truancy improvement plan and all those steps are followed. Jen Johnson is actively involved and I'm in communication with her regularly whenever a student hits that magic 10-day or if it's a legal absence, a three-day notice.
I, I would just ask that if, that we double-check with all of our buildings, that that, that is going on. What I mean is there might be some that are severe enough that it hits Jen, you know, Jen Johnson level or your desk, but I would just double-check that, that somebody in each building is truly gauging and in charge of that because I could be wrong, but.
Well, if they're a legal absence, they're required by law now to do a letter after the third day. So, parents must be notified in writing, it must be in their mode of communication and those letters are sent out weekly so that we're on top of who's hit that third day.
And when you say legal, what I mean, like, for example, if a child takes a trip and they're, they're welcome to do so and they're out for six days and then they're sick for five days, so they've hit 11.
That's correct.
Is that still considered illegal or not because a parent filled out a trip form and sent in sick notes? Like.
Once they hit 10 days of excused absences, they are still notified about the number of absences that they have. And then an unexcused absence is when truancy goes into play. So, we have multiple letters. One addresses excused, one addresses unexcused absences, and there's two different laws you have to follow.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions related to policy? Ms. Winters?
I just wanted to, on Andrea's point, the, one of the questions we asked yesterday, Andrea, was if a student under five had completed a kindergarten class and we felt that that individual was not ready, completed a kindergarten somewhere else, by law, we could not place them back in kindergarten. So, we would only have the choice of either not admitting them if they were not of age or putting them in first grade at that point. So, it's, there's legal requirements, if I'm correct about that date.
Any, any other questions related to policy? If not, we'll move on to other. Notice that there are, there is one gift and donation, accept the gift of Jupiter Trombone from Brad Smith to be used for students in need at Sky Viper Elementary School, value of $175. Under trips, approve the participation of our Kohler Media School and the Main Exchange Program for the 2019 school year, cost the district $1,044.90 for two substitutes for three days. And then we move on to dates for board members' calendars and I'll turn it over to the board president.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Looks like we have our regular schedule of meetings coming up in the next month or so. We don't have anything listed under old business. Under new business, we do have PSBA officer elections. I believe these were sent out to us in a board memo sometime over the last few weeks. If anyone is still missing that information, please reach out to Ms. Mandia so she can provide it to you. And then we have a motion to approve our board members who are attending the PSBA Leadership Conference next month in Hershey. So, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Ryan?
Just one point for the PSBA officer elections. There are some that are basically unopposed where the name is just the only name. I would just ask that maybe have Ms. Mandia add those names and as specific to the items that we need to vote on, so we're not scrambling that evening for who's running for what position and names.
So, basically, if there's no option, then just have it all pre-populated so we can zoom right through it?
That would be preferred.
Yeah, I think we all would be in agreement on that. Okay, any other comments or questions on these items for new business? All right. So, with that, I will open it up to courtesy of the floor. If anyone wishes to speak, can approach the podium. Mr. Bickelman?
Joe Bickelman from Audubon. This is basically for Ms. Larsonese. I don't think you heard my comments on this yet. There was a comments on whether to rebuild or repair Arrowhead and the comments were from the public and they're posted on the district's website. Number eight reads, "Please stop taking advice from the Three Stooges that come to every meeting, especially the ex-business manager who was let go from his job." That's a, that's a posting of a comment that doesn't have anything to do with repairing or rebuilding Arrowhead. It's kind of derogatory, calling somebody names. I said in the past that I don't know who this person is that made the comment, but I do know that you, the board, are leaving it up on the district's website at a time when we hear comments about inspire, you know, things like that and try to set an example for the kids, stop bullying. So, three individuals coming to a public meeting in this democracy we call America are being abused by the board by letting this comment on there. So, what's your opinion on that? Kim? If I had a reason, I would.
If you don't mind, I'll wait until after you're done and respond.
Yeah, okay. The next thing is supplemental contracts. I don't see a list of individuals for department coordinators as an attachment for the $99,730. I don't see that. When I went to review it, I don't see it there and it's a retroactive thing, so it's got to be somewhere, I guess, but I didn't see it. The mentors, $11,173. Might be a good idea as board members to get the buildings associated with those individuals listed there instead of just names and how much they're getting. The contract for Karen Mossup, we contracted $60,000 for routing for First Student. Karen Mossup was working for First Student and $60,000 was being spent and paid to First Student. And then Karen Mossup no longer works for First Student and First Student should just provide the services. I mean, they're a big company. Somebody should just, needs to jump in there and route. I don't agree with, Mike Ryan is on there for the attendance at the PSBA Leadership Conference. Mike's not going to be on the board as of December 1st, so we won't be reaping the benefits of his attendance at that conference and it might cost $1,300. So, I just don't see why, somebody else that's going to be on the board should be attending that instead of Mike because he won't be on the board. The other thing I have is I would hope that, it would, I would hope that a child, a seventh or eighth grader, would never verbally abuse a bus driver, okay? And I hope if it ever happens that they verbally abuse a bus driver, that, that would be a teachable moment to have that child lose his riding privileges on the bus for the year so that the other students can see what happens when you talk viciously and horribly to a bus driver that's dedicated to transporting the kid safely. I would hope that we wouldn't take the driver off the bus and put him on another run because in that way, they win, the person making the comment. So, we take a driver, put him on another run, the student might say they're sorry, but I think the student might lose their privilege for the year so that the other kids could see that. And I understand we're renting the church parking lot for the drivers.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is there anyone else, courtesy of the floor? Mr. Andrews?
I too am one of the stooges in the opinion of the person who wrote comment number eight in the Arrowhead Forward's survey. And this, this matter has been brought to the attention of administration and board and meetings and nothing has happened so far. And when I looked up the, the word stooge, the dictionary had a first definition as I've yet to check board policies related to this issue, but I think there's an old Bible saying that you should treat your neighbor as, as you treat yourself. So, I would hope that the board somehow responds to, by squelching this comment number With regard to the discussion about financing, when Mr. Willard was here earlier this evening, I would hope that the, that the finance packet that he provided to the board could be made available on the, on the web to the public tomorrow. And there was some mention of getting public input relative to this issue and, you know, the public has nothing to comment on if that document is, is hidden from the public. With regard to the pre-K counts, I don't think it was mentioned this evening that, that With regard to the pre-K counts, I don't think it was mentioned this evening that, that funding comes through, through the Commonwealth budgeting process. It, it just didn't appear by magic. And my reservations are along the lines that young children in the ages of three to five benefit a lot from outdoor play, and I don't see that being possible at our Cola. But it might be possible at, at some of the, the other facilities in the community, perhaps the Lower Providence Presbyterian Church, for instance, on Ridge Pike. I, I would think that, I would think that the kids in that age group benefit a lot from play. They really benefit from it. And, and I'm hesitant to say that they, they benefit at that age from academics, although certainly I've heard of many instances of children learning to read well before first grade, well before first grade. So, and the last item is that Mr. Willard mentioned capitalized interest, and during Dr. Zerby's tenure to date, he has proposed several times that the board vote for capitalized interest, and each time, the board was of the opinion that capitalized interest is not the way to go. In other words, that's deferring an interest payment to, to paying, paying it over the years, as, as putting it into principal and paying interest on interest.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Dr. Malik?
Jim Malik, Warchester. I feel for Mr. Andrews and Mr. Bickelman, because I've had board members who are sitting in this room call me disgusting. Another one called me a whack. You know, I can't get really too upset, because I guess I'm numb to it. It doesn't really affect me one way or the other. But, you know, I guess you got to be a stooge to come up with 13 grand a year, have no kids in the district, and then give your tax money to people that are calling you disgusting and a whack. There's like a lack of appreciation for members of the public. I mean, that's just my opinion. We had, I found at the Finance Committee, we had a $2.8 million surplus. Guys aware of that? Because this is like four years in a row now. $2.8 million bucks is a lot of money. And I guess my question is, what's the reason for the surplus? Anybody know? For the $2.8 million? Because I guess my question is, is it because we closed Audubon? Because closure of Audubon was supposed to save us $1.1 million. Is that why we got these surpluses? Because of the closure of Audubon? That'd be good to know, because if you're closing schools and saving money, and we're getting surpluses because of it, maybe you should think about Arrowhead, and then we'll have bigger surpluses. I mean, that's just one way to look at it. Dr. Zerby gave his presentation to the entire board on 1/15/19, and gave the board a renovation cost for Arrowhead of $14 million. Well, that figure was incorrect, because first of all, it was a fix-up. It wasn't a renovation. Right? It was a fix-up to do all the things in the facility study versus a renovation where you knock the walls out. Now, if you look at M&amp;M's, or not M&amp;M, KCBA's figures, the actual renovation cost total project, $32 million for renovation and 650 kids. Wait, did you have that information when you made your decision to keep the school open? As far as I can see, in reviewing the video, you didn't. A new school, total project, costs $35,606,000. Did you have that information when you made your decision to keep the school open in January of 2019? No. So you made your decision to keep the school open based on a $14 million flawed, inaccurate figure? If you had known you had these two higher figures of over $30 million, my question is, would you have done the same thing? And if the answer is yes, then there's no amount of money you won't spend. That's, that's what it boils down to. I gave you those handouts. In reviewing the handouts, if you look at the handout with the little graph on it, little chart, I can't find this chart in KCBA's feasibility study. Where'd it go? It was supposed to be the capacity, building utilization. Nowhere to be found in the enrollment study. Any reason they didn't put it in? Do you know? Chart's gone. No enrollment, no capacity, no, no analysis. The second figure has to do with full-day kindergarten. Second page. It says, "We will study all aspects of the school's program, including accommodating the potential integration of full-day kindergarten."
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
Right. And, nothing.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Yes.
I'll stand up here, because I'm short. Elaine Meck is Lower Providence. I'm just wondering if we can get an explanation as to why the bus drivers have a certain number of assigned parking spots, and now we have to park in the church, those that don't get a spot down there. But yet, when we come down, we see lots of spaces empty. So I don't know what your intent is with those empty spaces. As far as I know, our boss, Kim, is the one that's figuring all this out. And I know it just started as of yesterday, so I'm sure it's a work in progress. But I have a midday run, as others do, and we're, I'm in the church parking lot. And at midday, I'm supposed to park in the church parking lot, yet I walk down, or I can take the bus, but I walk because it's exercise, and I see tons of spaces empty, and yet I have to be shuttled or walk back and forth. So I'm just wondering what your intent is with these extra parking spots that we can't use now? So...
I don't know that I've ever seen you at a board meeting, so just to clarify, we don't generally respond during courtesy of the floor?
Yes, I know that. I was hoping maybe it could be on later or something.
Yeah, when we get to the end of the courtesy of the floor section of the evening, if anyone is able to respond to your question, they will.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, you can go ahead.
I've been absent so long, I forgot the procedure.
I didn't forget who you are, so...
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
It's just I get up way too early in the morning, and these late meetings are a killer. Okay. Karen Bickelman, Audubon. I'm curious. I know at past meetings, it's been discussed about a traffic study. I was wondering if you got any results on the traffic study, and I was wondering if the parking situation for the bus drivers is a result of that. I'm not happy with the parking situation for the drivers either, although I am parked down in the lot, near the bus garage, because I do come in at 5:30 in the morning, along with a lot of the other drivers. So I don't know if we received our spaces by that determination or what, but I'm thankful I'm down below. But what I want to bring to your attention is how unsafe it is. I was leaving to do my afternoon run the other day and going up the drive with the bus. There's three buses waiting to go out on sports runs. Now, in the meantime, you have other buses, I'm being one of them, to try to leave to go to my school, and you have a shuttle bus that is trying to bring our drivers down that are from that church parking lot, that have to get down to swipe in at our desk and have two minutes to get out to their bus to swipe in to start getting paid. Now, how fair is that to staff members that bring the students to and from school safely each day? I think it's totally unfair. As Elaine mentioned, there are plenty of parking spaces down there. I don't know what rhyme or reason why it is. There's a lot of rumors going along. And I just want to let you know, if you guys would be straightforward and honest with us and tell us the reasoning behind this decision, maybe we wouldn't be so upset. Okay? We're going to do what our employer says, but it's absurd of what you're making the drivers do, parking up in that lot when we have schedules to keep and we're depending on a shuttle. A lot of the drivers do walk down because it's, you have no choice. You got to beat the clock. I know, I, I'm down there, and I clock in at the kiosk. I have to run out to my bus, which is parked in the back, and I just barely make it. It's absurd. I don't know who made the decision. I'm unhappy with it, so are a lot of other people. I also took video of the empty spaces that sit down there, and you're making, I guess, half of our staff park up in that lot. So I think it's awful. I don't know the rhyme or reason why behind it. I wish you could give us an explanation, Dr. Zerby. The other thing, another rumor, the district is paying the church for the First Student drivers to park up there. So what is the liability for a driver getting hurt or injured up there, hit by a car because of all the traffic going up and down the drive, and cars being damaged? And one last thing I want to mention, your marquee says, "Inspire, empower, encourage, be the one." I agree with Mr. Andrews, with my husband, Joe Bickelman, and with Dr. Malik. I think that's an inappropriate comment, comment number eight, and I think the board should have removed it. That would be like the most decent thing to do. I think it's a sign of bullying. And speaking of bullying, I've heard negative comments addressed to bus drivers on the radio. I think it's totally inappropriate, and I think children should be disciplined for their wrongdoings. Riding the school bus is a privilege, and maybe if you discipline students properly with saying negative slurs, bullying, bad things that should not be said, I'm appalled at some of the things that I heard happened. I thank God I have a good group of kids that I bus, but I feel very sorry for the, the drivers that have to tolerate or listen to abusive, negative, hurtful comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Bickelman.
Thank you.
Brenda Perry, bus driver. I also want to reiterate about the parking. If you're paying the church to park, you're paying for transportation to and from, and you have dozens of open spots that we can park in, that seems to be a waste of money. First and second of all, you have drivers that have been here for 20 or 30 years that have the seniority to be able to pick a run so they can start later. They can start at 7 o'clock, and then they're punished and dehumiliated, and they have to park at the lot. Walk down, you got elderly people who are not getting any younger. Why do we have to walk so far up and down? That can be changed. I have a parking spot down there. That can be yanked from me any moment, and it just was. Frank Mayberry, his parking spot got yanked so he could give, so they could give it to a person that was here for two months, maybe. Is that fair? How would you like to park over there and have the teachers or somebody else that you have more seniority over? And then they get your spot. So anyway, it's just not fair. And this, I don't even know if all you are aware of it, if this is just done by the admin. You guys aware of it? I know you can't answer me, but it's not right.
Thank you.
Joe Poholski, Warchester. Madam President, members of the ward. Last meeting, I rose and brought up about three observations. And on two of the observations, I wanted to continue what I was trying to say last time. The first one is now with the beginning of the school year. The people that are at the VOTAC, people that are in, working towards their Eagle Scout merit badges, those things could be somehow utilized to benefit the school. Different projects such as building a shed or rebuilding a shed, putting in a alumni garden where people can put in bricks and pay for them and, and put those things through, but somebody that can have an actual benefit toward the school is something that I think the board should look at. I don't think it's something that is readily available to people. I don't think people think about it at the first part, but these are people that go to our schools, go to our sports, do their programs here, and would like to be a part of feeling like they did something. I can tell you right now that in Warchester, when there was a woman, husband that passed on, they made a garden, and they, all the kids put in that garden. I can't even think of her name right now, not because I'm nervous, I'm probably road wary, because I came back from DC. But the bottom line is, the kids, even to this day, talk about it. My son, now at South Carolina, made a comment about how his garden back at Warchester reminded him of what was at the University of South Carolina. And between you and me, it wasn't the same. His was better. But it's something that we, as a group, should think about to move forward. As I come to my halfway point, the next part is on the same lines, actually, but a little different, and that's about an umbrella tax number. We've talked about it for many times with ban, sports, cheerleading, educational clubs, and science fairs. And the reason why I find this so important is, today we had somebody that donated $175 to a school, and I think that's great. There's people out there that do that. I, I can tell from my, my own endeavors with the school that I've given plenty of money to certain funds that I wanted to do, and it was difficult going through the red tape of how to get certain funds to certain things. And my understanding is that if there is only one way that we can simplify this, this process, I think we'll do better. The problem that I have is that I, I have a postgraduate degree. I deal with people on the Hill many times, and I could get through almost anything. But when I come here, it's, I can get through it, but it's difficult, and we should simplify it, because not everyone has the God-given talents that I've been given. So the last part of that is, we talked about banners for around the football field and how people can pay each year to have them up. I understand Warchester have their ordinance. I think there would be a way that we could work through that if we could only get a group to go forward. So I have exhausted my time. I appreciate your time, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poholski. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Yes.
Taj Davis, Warchester Township, also a bus driver for First Student. Same comment with the parking at the church. Just yesterday alone, I walked, according to my watch, 3.5 miles. A lot of us bus drivers were actually driving during the time that the other bus drivers are trying to get in, so we can't actually shuttle. And we already have a shortage of bus drivers to begin with. So that... So that creates a massive issue. So even though I have bronchitis and a SARS infection right now, I still walked. Some bus drivers won't do that, to make it to the kids in time. So I really think that needs to be looked into. I don't really mind walking right now, but it's obviously going to get colder, there's going to be snow, ice, whatever. And also, just with the light here on Crebo Mill, I know that when you're on Germantown Pike, there is the turn signal, you know, the left, and if you're coming the opposite direction, you have that signal. There isn't one if you're on Crebo Mill trying to make the left onto Germantown. So I don't know if maybe the school board could call into the township to see if they could do a study, to see if, you know, that type of light could be put in there. And also, if you're on East Mount Kirk, and you're making the left onto Germantown, it's a very short light, like only one or two of our buses can get through, and then we're constantly late dropping off the kids, like for the high school, for example. So anything that you guys could do to help us get there on time, then we can get everybody else there on time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Hi, I'm not really good at this, so. My name is Maggie Burnick. I am also a school bus driver, and I live in the township. There's some more safety issues. There's no sidewalks to walk down, and the lighting's not very good. It's awful dark in the morning. As I was driving out this morning, I was one of the first drivers to pull out. Usually have to worry about deer. Now, I have to worry about my fellow comrades that I don't hit them, so I have to be very careful. It's a safety issue. It really is. It's not safe walking down, and like she said, it's going to be getting cold out and icy. So I hope you consider our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay, at this point, if there's any board members that want to respond to anything, I would allow you to do so. But at first, I did promise Mr. Bickelman that I would respond to his comment, and I wanted to get to that. I do understand where you're coming from with the comments that are in that document, and I looked through it, and there's a lot of inaccuracies, and there's a lot of exaggerations, and there's a lot of irrelevant and derogatory comments. There's a comment in there that, you know, 95 or 90% of the people in our district don't have children in the schools, which isn't true. There's a comment in there calling our students, saying the kids are getting dumber every year. I mean, there's a lot of inaccuracies in there, and I personally did not want to be responsible for censoring public comment or fact-checking the document. And so my position has been to maintain that level of transparency and keep the document there. I understand that there are board members who disagree, and if that's the case, we can certainly, we can make a decision to pull the document, but in the interest of transparency, my feeling is it's either there or it's not there. I don't want to censor what people are saying. So I am, it's been on my mind. I've been hearing about it, I've been thinking about it. That's just where I'm at right now with that. As far as the comments about the bus drivers and the parking, the board was made aware of the fact that there was an issue with parking on the high school campus for the bus drivers. The board was made aware of a potential, what was seen as a potential solution. It sounds like there may be some problems with that potential solution. So I would like to ask Dr. Zerby and Mr. Bricker and anyone else who may be pertinent to this process to possibly revisit it and see that these issues can be looked at in terms of our driver's safety and the efficiency, and whether or not this truly is the best process, because it's, from what we're hearing tonight, it sounds like it may not be, and I think it's, at the very least, it's worth revisiting.
We'll do.
Thank you.
The high school bus is leaving yesterday. They were late to push some of the drivers who were trying to get down there to clock in.
Okay. And we will, we will look into it. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate all of you guys coming out and letting us know about that, because that's, that's how we learn. So if any other board members have any comments, any responses, otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing it to our attention, and thank you, Madam President, for asking the administration to look at it.
And that's something that I think we can possibly bring up at a future board meeting. I don't want to get into a back and forth, because I think it, it isn't good for the overall conduct of the meeting, but I do think that as part of this ongoing conversation, Dr. Zerby, if we could get an update at a future meeting on any traffic studies that have been done, and whether or not parking has been a component of that. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Say a motion to adjourn. If someone's going to make a motion, now would be the time to do it. Thank you, Mr. Winters. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second, Ms. Drummond. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.